Rest is here.
Get started. Regular council meeting for the news picture, January third, twenty twenty-three.
Let's move. In the states of America. Good republic, military stance. Um, we'll call please.
Mayor Loughlin. Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Here.
Good Wyler.
Here.
Yeah.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second hearing, all those in favor to approve tonight's agenda, say aye.
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 The consent agenda consists of the minutes, approving the minutes of the December nineteenth, regular council meeting. Oh, we got a bunch of mayoral appointments. Okay, Mayor Protem of Colton Miller. Official city newspaper of the West Branch, this is the West Branch Times, uh, animal control facility would be the West Branch Animal Clinic. And the official city engineer would be Dave Scheckinger of Beaster and Kim.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So we used to do more, we used to have like a, a city medical health person?
Yeah.
Or we just don't need one of them anymore?
That's something Wesley and I talked about.
I took it off because we didn't have a answer yet. We had a to be determined. We had that last year as well.
Yeah, I called.
Retired.
We never.
Yeah, so we never actually got anybody in over the holidays with the craziness. We were gonna ask Cory if the, because that was public health officer.
No.
If that could be listed at Cedar Crowning. If Cedar Crown would be the public, or doesn't have to be a doctor. We didn't have the history, so we didn't know.
One of those things in our ordinance that I don't know why we have it. I know it's beneficial on the employment side when we're talking about, you know, workers comp and things like that. But. We just had questions before. Wanted you guys to approve some of them.
Good.
Alright, good point.
The fire department can solve the Novak when we gave him COVID vaccine.
Think so. I, I wouldn't know.
I think from the city's perspective, you probably want somebody. I don't think our ordinance requires it, but I think it wouldn't look good.
Maybe you. Right, that's who I would ask. I think I did ask. I think we did last.
Didn't have anyone that, last one I just said to be determined. I think they, I think we had talked before with, under, um, prior administration that we would talk with Brad Hytop, but I don't know that ever got changed.
I'm not sure what he practices now.
Yeah, I heard he's up there, isn't he? You know, if it was a bigger thing than making mercy, you pick a lot harder, if you had to pick the whole mercy.
Last one I talked to was Novak, I think, but he was retiring, so. I think he said no, retiring, but that was like three years ago.
Yeah, it's been, we've had it to be determined.
What?
Do you know mercy clinic?
I was saying Hytop.
As a whole?
That's what makes it hard, because a major just officer, not necessarily off, for our employment purposes. Yes, they go to mercy, um, but specifically our ordinance calls for an officer, so that will be one single person. They already go to mercy. It always changes.
Just a name to say, or a name placeholder, they go to mercy anyway.
During COVID, we have a.
See, during COVID, I think we had.
Brad was here.
I mean, that's, I mean, if you go to mercy anyway, they're gonna go see him anyway.
I'm gonna make all.
Yeah, I mean, if that's where we go, we're gonna see him anyway, so it'd be more just a.
That's. Okay, and the last item was the claims of, uh, January, ending January third. Uh, motion placed to approve the consent.
Move. Second.
Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Second. Goodbye.
Um. Um, okay, yeah, I'm center myself.
Well.
Uh, presentation, open communication portion of our meeting, um, if anyone would like to speak to the council, we'd like to hear what you have to say. Cannot act, but we'll listen to you, winning bakers. Hearing none, we're gonna move on. Non consent agenda consists of resolution twenty-three dash oh-one. Adopting a policy authorizing the finance officer or city clerk to pay certain bills prior to the city council's approval. Motion.
Move.
Second.
Questions? This is just something we do yearly, because I know we do this all the time.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Good Wyler?
Dean? Yes.
Yes.
All right, resolution twenty-three dash oh-two, setting strategic goals and priorities for the city. For twenty twenty-three and beyond. Uh, motion please.
Remove. One second.
Okay, um. So we have here what we've been talking about for the last few months. And what we can go over them.
Uh, if anybody has.
Yeah.
Questions, I'll talk a little bit about how we're addressing the budget just before we leave, but other than that, I, unless somebody has final comments on it.
It's good to me.
Yeah, I didn't come up with anything to. Change. Okay, let's vote on the, the, uh, goals and priorities then, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Go.
Okay.
Good Wyler.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, so.
So did you vote no?
So you.
She asked before though.
Well, if she had, I was gonna, you're gonna ask her why.
Um. The administrators, do you have anything?
Yes, I'll address your strategic goals and what that means. Uh, I'll repeat this probably three or four times even during budget, just so you guys know. This is kind of the things I'm using to prioritize the budget. Um, finalizing twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan, we have roundabout bids in. Uh, moving towards east side, Dave will talk about that more in our next meeting. Uh, and then Wopsey Creek, we do have a court hearing date in February for, um, condemnation.
So court hearing or the.
Cedar County.
It's, yeah, it's the, uh.
Yep.
Assessors group or.
Yep, yep. Uh, financial sustainability, um, some things that we needed to do, we cut from celebrations in the upcoming budget. Um, parking rec programs, if they don't break even, they were cut. Um, and then we've done some incentive food items for some of our. I wanna say quarterly celebration items, cut those off. So we're at a decent surplus in the general fund, but just waiting on inflation. Uh, before we make any of those like fifth officer decisions, um, but some of those cuts went a long way. Um, Main Street reconstruction, I've got it as a plan to budget that in fiscal year twenty-five to have Dave, uh, get going on the Main Street reconstruction project. Water needs assessment that is budgeted for this fiscal year to take care of that. Uh, renewing local option sales tax, we're gonna talk about that in February, um, hopefully some sort of resolution in March. Uh, in terms of what we want the language to say in November, uh, public safety trends, uh, if inflation slows down the four percent or less. There is that possibility of a fifth officer by fiscal year twenty-six, possibly twenty-five. Police have made the first move by delaying purchasing their vehicles. So they are spreading out. Um. Making that first move. Um, continued on-call pay for fire department and then supporting them through hometown days. Uh, reevaluating programs and services, we'll talk a little bit more about that next, next week. Um, but that's gonna be an ongoing discussion probably every month until, uh, we get those done. Uh, lead service line inventory, they did budget a little bit more time in water for the lead service line inventory, um, and then replaced. Some of those, uh, wages help kind of fund a part-time mower if we need it. Office succession. Um, depending on what council votes on or decides on next meeting, do you have a possible twenty-hour wheat position for water and sewer? Um, coordinator in hopes to either save library labor costs or to start training a replacement. No matter what happens by fiscal year twenty-five, we have to have a plan for Leslie's retirement.
No.
Yep.
Yeah.
So. Um.
Look, we've been able, as a walk, an opportunity, he's coming.
Saving for grants and upcoming projects, we're still saving for Heritage Square and Hotel Motel. Um, we do have a hundred and fifty thousand that will get reimbursed for east side downtown revitalization through Tiff. So, um, we may wanna talk about what to do with those funds. Um, there is pretty decent surplus in general funds, sewer water, stormwater. And even streets, so we did make some changes in the road use tax. Uh, last year we had a deficit in our road use tax budget. Hopefully in twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven, we'll start the sidewalk repair enforcement, depends on upfront money, um, that we have available. In case somebody doesn't fix their sidewalk, it ends up being Public Works that does it first, then we ask residents to pay for it. Um, continue discussions on community development director. I've got fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-seven would be to plan the interim agreement. This position needs replaced first, and then the way I see it, police made the first move in sacrificing. A little bit of their equipment rotation, I'd like to see Main Street make another move first. Um, just speaking on terms of looking out for the city, obviously you guys know I'm very downtown oriented, um, but I think police has made the first move. For you guys in terms of sacrificing.
So what do you mean by Main Street making the next move?
Uh, that extra seven to ten that's needed, it'd be nice if they. Cut that down. Just because that's where we're, we need additional funds on the general fund side, so.
Is it more than seven? What could?
It would be obviously with, uh, health benefits, which we'll talk more about. I don't wanna get in that much detail today. We'll discuss that more when we're talking benefits. Um, but on the general fund side where we've got the less, the least amount of wiggle room, that's where that. Possible seven to ten, and based on. Internal hotel discussions, if things are, go forward, there's nothing publicly to share, but that twenties twenty-six timeframe. Would be a decent idea or goal to have a hotel up and running by then. Um, that's about three to four years out, and that's fair. Um, by the time you reach a deal and something gets built and then it gets filled and it's on the tax roll, you're talking three to four years out. So that's partially the purpose of. That being the goal of twenty-six or twenty-seven. That's it for now. I'm gonna repeat that like a bunch of times. Those are your goals, that's what I'm trying to prioritize. In terms of home rebates, I have talked to you about that. City staff needs to talk about that a little bit further, but either in January or February, we're gonna have to reduce how much we give per year. Um, otherwise, we're giving out a hundred and twenty thousand or so next year in home rebates, which we can't do. But if we cap it at like one thousand a year and extend the program, it'll be around sixty thousand that we'll give out in those home rebates, so. Um, let us plan that policy out a little bit better, um, but just know that's coming around the corner. My last, I guess, questions I've got for you guys is. I'm speaking to, um, some of the students in J-term. I don't know if there's any specific questions you have for high schoolers and what they're looking for in the future of West Branch. You know, it's kind of off the cusp, but I don't know if there's any type of feedback you're looking from high school students, if I'm meeting with them and talking with them over J-term.
Are you meeting them at the school or they coming in?
At the school.
Ask them what it would take for them to come back to West Branch and live full-time.
Yeah, what do they wanna see in a small town? What do they want?
They've only been telling us for ten years, we can't do it. They want a rec center, they want a swimming pool, they want all those things we can't do.
Yeah.
The softball event. Yep.
I can't think of anything else.
Maybe their answers change.
Um, anything else? Adam?
No, I do have a question just for Matt. Uh, can you remind council where we're at on the Greenview extension project, how close we are to being done on that?
Um, pretty much everything's been completed on it, other than the seal coat work that will happen in the spring. One of the neighbors put some rock on the grass that was left, so now it's kinda. I'm not gonna mow it till that gets cleared, so. Right now it's rock across the entire thing. Only part of that's gonna be seal coated, sorry about that. That's all that's left. The fence was moved. Few weeks back, three weeks back. Other than that, it's all, it was.
Thank you.
You wouldn't have any rock down the shop and throwing pabu, what they.
It will stay.
Can't go rock in a pabu. We can bring some up.
There's plenty of gravel up there.
Yeah. Brown. The way you, the best show. That's why.
Still wouldn't say.
It just doesn't say. Yeah, you always want to play it back down.
All right, uh, city attorney is absent, city engineer is not here, city staff, Heidi or Matt, anyone, Leslie, Chief? Okay, that leaves mayor and council, I have a couple. Um, can we get, would we think about getting serious about calling a truck route? Past Methodist Church. Um. Just a few signs, maybe it might be all of the tape. So trucks, I'm thinking of it maybe as an experiment, I don't know, and see if it's feasible.
The majority of the trucks come from coal, not here. It's not a sign, why don't we just go up there and just say?
I could do that, I've got no problem doing that.
We recommend they turn it, Methodist, and turn on.
Cause our coal trucks all summer long, they did it and it worked really well for them. Road survived, might be a little more gravel. But. Those trucks might have been shorter than what the green trucks are.
If that was designated as a truck route.
I'd like to get serious about. Maybe they're burning out truck traffic from downtown, really.
So my question is, is when we, when we redid that road in front of town hall. We spent all that money redoing that chunker road, did we do the proper things to make that a truck route? I mean, because I sure wouldn't wanna tear up our new road.
Seven inches thick, I think that was seven inches, that. Yeah.
You can campaign, Matt.
I'm, I'm sure that would hold up.
Yeah.
It was about five inches. And then brought up the six and seven.
It's seven, seven was a minimum. Okay, so.
Plus it has good base under it, and I think they have a foot. Yeah, there's some mesh under something.
I don't have a problem, I'll go out there and talk to them, I'm doing well.
I have talked with them before in the past, it's just, depends on who's driving the truck and whether they're gonna.
And there's other guys too.
I don't know why they choose College Street.
Okay.
So, that might be just one sign, putting on College Street, not like. No. Something about hill trap or. Very, you can just sign, you can just put a no left turn for semi, like College Street.
College.
I'm stopping.
You want to take green, don't you?
Yeah, green. They wouldn't assume of college.
They do.
Yeah.
They are.
They have?
Yes.
You said. Uh, all right, how about that hell? Get all bottom out at the bottom, like, there's nobody else though.
I'm thinking one time.
Okay, I'm gonna work on that a little bit. Um, is there any chance we could? Move the snow off of Covey Park, the sidewalk, like Covey Park, like last. Just the pickup truck.
We didn't do that last year.
I know, should be. I, I had two comments about it and, um. People like to walk. And.
That's up.
Snow one's good exercise too.
So our policy is we're not gonna do it, not gonna.
That was, I think, the direction that Kevin said we should stick with it based off of, once we clear them, they have to be kept as clear as any other sidewalk, so we're not liable for some.
Yeah.
We're ready to spend more in salt on the road use tax budget, then I would say yes, and then if we're ready to do that at every park. Then yes, we're not picking and choosing which parks are, are being maintained better. I get it, that, that crowd is, that side of town is very vocal on the parks, but just remember, there are people that live next to Gronk and Wopsey and all that stuff that. Probably, correct, that probably have that same, same need, just.
Okay, well, maybe someday. Um, Thomas Drive. So they're building, someone's building a little house, they are killing cul-de-sac. And my daughter said tonight they're backing into her yard. I don't know what we can do about it, she just didn't say there's nothing to do about it. I don't know, there's nothing we're gonna.
Drove in Melissa Russell's yard also.
So what I think we might wanna do is tell that contractor in, in the spring, he's gotta come and fix the cul-de-sac, the ruts that are just steep. And.
Pardon? Neighbor yard, dude, neighbor.
Right, and a neighbor yard. Yeah. Okay. We gonna hire a part-time mower this summer, cause I talked to a guy down the street, he might be thinking about.
I don't know.
Retired.
We haven't cited it, but the route we're gonna go and.
Okay.
Depends on how next week goes. It is in my current proposal, but, uh, depends on. Uh, if council agrees to some of my transparent items.
He's an entire copy, he used to work in Boston. He wants something to do, gone, long gone.
He a part-time?
I think he talked to you. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody, anything else?
I'm planning to go talk to you, you thought you already had.
I do. So we have, we have a home that's a habitual offender in our. Nuisance abavements, and we were gonna take some action on that, but we were kind of put in a halt because apparently the bank was going, maybe do some, some action. But there's no action. I mean, if we're gonna be nice and, 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 and not proceed for, so the bank can do their thing, then they need to do it.
Are they being tied up because of the thirty-day notification or sixty-day notification?
I have no idea. No, it's been about two hundred days, so.
I'll call someone I know who's. Yeah.
It takes at least six months minimum to do foreclosure.
But they need to keep us abreast that they're moving forward.
So I'll ask Kevin where they're at. So I agree with you, you guys need enough.
Go ahead.
Uh, the corner of Cookson and Second Street. We probably need to start thinking about a top sign. Come on. Come on down corner. Corner Mike Lee Cookson.
It, it's supposed to have a yield sign.
Huh?
Supposed to be a yield sign on both of them, on Cookson. There's just, it's on.
A yield?
That good enough?
Don't bring it up.
I don't know, it's gonna get busy over there.
Kippen has yield signs, they used to have uncontrolled intersections, Kippen did, it's terrible. Now I see they put up the old sign. There was no stops at all years ago.
Well, that is an agenda item for formal discussion.
Ninety-degree corners too, but now we're about. Right?
Assuming they're going the right way.
No, you don't, because some people don't know how to use them, but they'll just stop dead in their tracks.
Yeah, we'll have it as a formal item.
Yeah.
Seal the tracks.
Thank you.
My daughter saw something going wrong, like.
Going the wrong way, that's why you can.
Portland. No, more of them stacked on top of. The administrative. And that, you know, thinks it, it doesn't like a hot dog.
Okay, anybody, anything else?
All right, just this part.
Interviews next week, count that.
Yep.
Five. Hytop's open.
Five interviews next week.
Next week.
Good hand bid?
Three, two. I just.
Is yellow hands up?
Yep.
Okay, I guess that's all we got. Pushing to adjourn?
Remove.
All those in favor say aye.